You know, when you're ready. I will call to order a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, March 21st, 2022. The time is 5:32 PM. First item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, that is liberty and justice for all. We have approval of minutes, so you should have two in your packet. February 22nd was our regular meeting, and then March 7th. There are a motion for either.
Motion to approve the February 22nd meeting minutes.
I'll second. Is there any discussion on the February 22nd meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
That's right. Turn this one up. Can you talk to us? Liza, so I can.
Are you hearing me?
Good, now we are. Okay. Yours was an "I," correct?
Yes.
All right. We have our March 7th last regular meeting.
Motion for the March 7th meeting minutes.
I will second. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All right, seeing all those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Jim Carey. All right. The next is. Appreciate people still being with us. We, just for the record, we moved our meeting to accommodate for the public hearing for ARPA that's at 6:30, and this way we can still get some business done and not have to cancel. All right, present to speak. If you are on the call or in the room and you would like to speak, I just ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Anyone on the call? Anyone in the room? There are a couple of people in the room, so they both shake their heads no. Anyone on the call? Okay. There is an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you so choose. Correspondents, you have a list of correspondents in your packet. The questions, they are all on file in the Selectmen's office. Questions regarding correspondence? I will go to first Selectmen's status report. The Steve Grant, I've no new update. We're still working with contract specialists to get that moving. The school building committee met on March 16th. We discussed the process of EdSpecs. So the Board of Education determines the EdSpecs for any given project, and the indications that they will be meeting, I believe, at a special meeting on April 5th. So I'll keep you posted what happens on the after such meeting is held. Lot set, this from Hall School to the Mills, we'll be doing some work on sidewalks in that area. We hope to have the RFP finalized this week by end of week that will go out to bid. Truck lease, nothing new for it. Okay, so my notes are still correct. We're still waiting for one vehicle, the F-350, no build date. I did hear some interesting information on the some information on the news that they were actually sending out some private vehicles that have been purchased without certain chips in them and then crediting those costs. And then later, at a later date, when those chips came in, I apologize, I don't recall now which, you know, particular chip it was that they needed, so they're starting to try to move things because there's such a backlog. So hopefully we'll have some information sooner, not later. The ARPA process, again, there is a meeting at 6:30 this evening. The information can be found on our website. And there will be a public hearing on several items that have come before ARPA. And for the items that are included in the public hearing portion, ARPA Commission has already heard those submissions from different parties, so there could be action as soon as this evening. I don't, you know, that will be determined by that commission. Union negotiations. The information I received late this afternoon is everything is in agreement, and we hope to have a final document to us by the end of the week. So, so let's hope that that is the case, at which point that final document has to, will be ratified by the union, and then we will have to meet as a board to do the same. Staffing. I regretfully inform you that this afternoon, our Public Works Director submitted his resignation effective April 8. So Troy is planning to leave us at this point. We will begin a search at that point. So it just happened this afternoon, so I'm sharing that with you all. Now, the first of Selectmen are hearing this as well. I won't put Troy on the spot asking to speak to that, but if either of you have any comments, feel free to reach out to me. What's your Troy? COVID-19, so our updates will come a little bit different than they have in the past. We're getting a little bit change in information on a regular basis with case numbers dropping. I will tell you that our case rates per 100,000 did increase slightly since our last meeting, so we are now in the yellow, which is really encouraging people to be you know, just to be certainly be cautious. And that, a lot of that may come from a change in masking issues. We're starting to see a lot of masks removed. And there's that. We are at 64% fully vaccinated as well. So that is all I have for an update today. Any questions, comments?
No.
All right, Public Works, Troy is with us tonight. Will update us on what they were doing.
Still doing the trash at Park Place week, Mondays and Fridays. We finished a drainage project on Myrtle Road. The guys have washed the trucks. They cleaned the shop out real good. They've been around town picking up the curb that we broke this winter. They serviced the wood chipper. They chipped and brushed around town. We had some trees fall during that. It's on the head. We've started to grade the gravel roads, weather permitting. Been cleaning off catch basins. Roads that moment is still going on around town periodically. We installed a speed sign on Village Hill, and the fastest we've had was 74 miles an hour recorded at 4:30 in the afternoon.
And Troy, we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit about that in that speeding report, and because then we'll talk about when you put that up in that particular area.
We picked up some trash that was on Spack Road. Somebody dropped the hot. That's kind of about it.
Any questions for Public Works? I hope this news is about Stonejoe.
I think we asked them.
There.
Give those to State Police.
So speeding on town roads is an item on this agenda, which we can talk about later.
Thank you.
All right, old business. Approved Board of Selectmen's budget for submission to Board of Finance. So I added this on at our previous meeting. We agreed to a budget, and then that was what was being submitted to Board of Finance. Actually, the day that that submission was going was the day that bombing broke out between Russia and Ukraine. So that morning, the superintendent and I immediately went to meet with our business manager to take a look at what the prices were that day and say we should lock into fuel prices now. We were waiting it out. We had budgeted, if you recall, at $2.50 for both heating and diesel oil. And the superintendent and I both felt that it was time for us to lock something in because this could get much worse before it got better. So we were able to lock into the daily rate at that point at $2.94 for heating oil and $2.97 for diesel fuel. So that, I thought it was best, and in the Board of, the superintendent and I both did this with our budgets, he was presenting that evening. We gave the correct, the newer numbers that we were able to figure to the Board of Finance for the budgeting process. So had we locked something in, we would have accurately budgeted, so I thought it was important that these increases be reflected in the budget. But I think it's important that as a board, we go ahead and take some formal action on that. So there are actually three things in the last budget number that Donna has presented before the Board of Finance that encompasses the Board of Selectmen's. There was the fuel increases, a $3 increase in the Eastern Highlands number. So I feel like that was just a typo. And a reduction in the Human Services Department. And the reduction there came from discussions with the ARPA process. So if you both recall, we had suggested that we take the increase of adding a senior center staffing position and the in the extra increase to the Human Services Director salary and spread that out. Oh, we gotta move around. Spread that out over three years using ARPA funds. So we absorbed a quarter of that increase and asked ARPA to take on 75%. The year two would have been 50/50, year three would have been three quarters for our budget, a quarter the other direction. What, what has been presented now is actually a reduction to our request for into Human Services. So had we not seen fuel increases, it would have been a, not a lot, excuse me, but a decrease to our budget as a whole. And that was to remove the senior center position from that ARPA request, that split. So fully fund the increases for the staff that we currently have. The eight hours of Human Services Assistant and the Director. Fully fund those in the budget and then ask ARPA in year one to 100% fund the increase in the senior center position. So that actually allowed for an overall decrease in the Human Services Department. So with those three, the oil was the heating and diesel fuel was an increase to us, a little over $10,000. So that brings the budget for the Board of Selectmen, it's currently before the Board of Finance, to $4,078,821. It had, it had been $4,066,632.
Four million.
$4,078,821.
$78.
$821. So that is what's before the Board of Finance currently. So I would make the motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the current number that's before the Board of Finance at $4,078,821.
Still moved.
I move. Do you second?
Yeah, sure. I'll second.
Okay, so discussion. Any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion. Attending the last Board of Finance meeting, there seemed to be considerable concern at the Board of Finance. Submitting a 10% spending or thereabouts, whatever you ever take. They started going down through the process of the budget worksheet and all that. And then maybe rather than having them do that themselves, we have an opportunity here at the Selectmen level to make adjustments. So at least we have some control over the impact rather than sending it directly to them. So there is a way, I believe, to bring our spending down into the 4% to 5% range, or should be more in line with the towns and some of our other local towns are submitting. We can go through that, those proposals that I have there, or we can continue discussing here. So my thinking is that our grant list has grown about 3%. Usually, we've been advised in the past, that's how we should be adjusting our CIP spending. It should be in line with the grant list. I know inflation's running. Last time I just looked, it's in the 7% range, and we're submitting something considerably over that. So I think we can make some adjustments. Now, or just to do that, just take one last look at it. I think saying the Board of Finance to cut loose, they'll do whatever they will at that point.
Well, I mean, I think we had our budget workshops, and through that process, we had discussed at length many areas. I mean, I'm absolutely willing to, you know, open to hearing your thoughts, Jim. I think that we've had, you know, extensive conversations in this area, and I'm, I am curious to hear what the suggestions are for what to cut because I know that we got to a point where we were able to look at maybe $100 here or $100 there in terms of, you know, the, like, purchasing of paper products or whatever, office supplies. But you know, if memory serves, our, our conversations had gotten to the point where we couldn't think of anything that we were willing to sacrifice in terms of the running, in terms of the quality of running this town. And I was on the Board of Finance meeting, I listened in, and my concern is that there's a lot of attention being paid to the number and the increase, which is a very important number to pay attention to, so I don't want to minimize the impact. I am a taxpayer here as well, and I, I understand there's an impact for all of us. So the conversation was a lot about a number and a percentage that we should be aiming for without discussion of what it means and what we're going to be losing if we aim for that somewhat arbitrary number. Yes, there's been inflation of 7% in the country, but there's also been some significant Wellington-specific issues that we're having to deal with, which doesn't account, which has nothing to do with inflation. And then inflation is on top of that. So, so I am curious to hear what things you're interested in, in cutting now that we weren't able to discuss or, or brainstorm in our, in our months of, of budget workshops in the past. But I also do want us to, as a Board of Selectmen, be confident in what we're putting forward in saying that we believe these expenses are very important. And then all three of us having voted "I" to push the budget forward, then support that budget within the Board of Finance when it comes time for questions.
So I'm, I'm open to hearing what Jim has to say, but you know, I agree with Liza. Look, I'm looking, this came over, Liza, I'm looking at a paper copy of Jim's suggestions, and it came over minutes before we sat down at the table. And I already have some concerns, but my biggest concerns with Board of Finance are, are they looking at what those dollars are being used for, not just trying to get to a nice round percentage number that sounds good? Our responsibility, while being physically responsible, is providing adequate services. I already think we are deficient in multiple areas. And, you know, some of these increases concern me.
But we are still increasing. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, in fact, most of the areas are increases. I'm suggesting we don't increase it by so much. For example, you know, employee insurances, you could probably remove one placeholder. I know we have.
We only have, no, we have one placeholder.
We only have one.
We have one placeholder.
Okay, well.
And I don't know that that dollar amount is one placeholder.
So that's one. The other, the other one is CIP spending, right? We typically, it typically grows by the, our grant list. We have a grant list that was actually pretty healthy this year. It's in the 3% range, healthy historically speaking. I mean, if you dropped it down to a 3% increase, that's, you could take $45,000 off our budget right there.
Can I apologize? Can you send this to Liza? And then Kelsey emailed you, Liza, so you can follow the sheet that Jim provided.
Can you, can you have her email the email address I texted you because my work one was having a having an issue? That's why I couldn't get on earlier.
Transfer station. My recommendation was reduce the increase, so you are increasing it by 7%. More in line with inflation. The one I had was you have $50,000 in it for tree work. I'm just wondering, it seems like we should be able to find some areas and other areas of our budgets that might be able to do that tree work sooner or later. That's one potential. Parking lot work at Senior Center. Perhaps we could, maybe this is not the year to do the parking lot work. We've got, we've got a lot of needs and severe inflation everywhere. I mean, that's one thing we put off. Just a couple of minor things that we could, like, maybe we can and we could save $1,000 on town mall operations, or maybe $1,000 to the Selectmen's budget. But, you know, maybe accounting services, maybe we only increased that 14% over last year to 30, you know, you can take $30,000 off.
So something like, versus I, Kelsey's going to get my budget book so I can look at those, what makes up that whole figure? What, you know, $30,000 do you suggest cutting in accounting services? We have a contract for our financial software. We have staff costs and minimal supply costs. So $30,000 cut is staffing? Is, are you suggesting a staffing cut?
I'm suggesting that maybe we adjust our raises.
And how do you propose to do that? So Jimmy, you're aware, as Liza, that we were in, we're in a negotiation period in a contract that we worked on together. Are you suggesting that not agreement?
No, I'm suggesting that we take a look at accounting services and perhaps there's
Okay, so.
Grow it only by 14%.
So here are the increases in accounting services. There's currently 30, let's round up, $3,700 in an increase to the Business Manager. $1,300 to the Payroll Coordinator, which is a union position. There's actually a decreasing Account Analyst because of the staff that's there. $57,000 increase, and that is a significant increase is because we added, this board added an account an Assistant Business Manager position, which is a, a union position, so that's actually fully funding that for the first time in, in the budget. Accounting software support, again, is the product we use in the office that has a 4.6% increase. And then $1,000 in training and education, and then $2,000 in office supplies. So I'm, I'm saying, how do, how do we cut $30,000 without cutting a staff member? Out of those lineup. So I'm not opposed to this, but if we're going to do the exercise, we have to be able to say, what are we going to do with $30,000 left? Because of the $60,000 increase, 57 of it is an entirely new position that was put in place in November.
Well, again, I take a stab at a number of these things here to get that discussion going, including, you know, revenue collector. And I understand the full, full history behind it, but I'm also looking at the increases. I mean, we got, you know, I'm suggesting, you know, a 10% increase over, over last year is my, is my recommendation. And that, and that, again, that's, I did it by block. I did it by the block that the Board of Finance will be looking at and asking those very same questions.
But if we can't, if we don't know what's making up that block and we just pick a number out of thin air, how are we providing the services needed? That, that's, I don't have a problem going through this exercise, but to offer a $30,000 cut.
Go back and ask, we can also go ask the other departments, say, look, what's the, is there a way, how, think about the way how to go do that? And I would, I would ask the Finance Department to think about that and see if that's a possibility. And to go back to the Tax Department, Repecklection Department, ask, is there a possibility? And if there isn't, then we've done our diligence.
I feel like we've engaged in that process extensively. And again, I don't I hear the concerns, and I will raise that my own concern of we are in this situation because of this exact kind of budgeting in the past. We have so underfunded certain areas that have needed funding, including our maintenance, our physical plant, our trees. I mean, we can't, we have to cut trees, so we can't cut the budget to trees, right? Like, we are, we are in a situation where we have put ourselves behind the eight ball by not having incremental increases in our taxes, which we likely should have been doing for a significant period of time, so that we could have been ahead of the game when it came to our maintenance. We are in a, we are in a bind. I don't understand what elements we're okay with cutting at this point because they're going to end up being staffing, and then we're not going to have the services that we need.
Let's take a look at, at least CIP, all right? And so, okay. Take the town budget set aside there. That's what that said, CIP. That's a 10% increase in CIP spending.
Yes, and one of those reasons, as I understand it, is to start preparation for work on our schools because either we're going to be undergoing a considerable renovation or building a new school. And so rather than in five years from now, or whatever the timeline, we have a 10 mil increase, we're starting the process for preparation for that now. I mean, that's what I understood a lot of that increase has to do with.
Plow truck that we're purchasing outright in cash. We have an excavator purchasing outright in cash. We have fire department who's going ahead with engineering changes, an expansion or renovation or addition. I mean, those are like three things right there that maybe this isn't the year to go do that. Maybe, and, and just for the, concerning the school building committee, I mean, there are some options they're working through, but nobody's selected anything. And I hate to, I hate to just put this in front of the townspeople, so yep, we're, we're on the railroad tracks to, to building a new school, but we haven't selected anything yet, and we should let that committee.
No, I think the issue is either we're building a new school or we're obligated to do renovations on what we already have. There's no, there's no version of reality of the future in which we're not doing one of those two things. Either building a new school or we're sinking more money into our existing schools. There's no way we're going to get out of spending a lot of money in our school buildings in one way or another.
We are building a new school, so that, that discussion needs to stop in that, the talking point. We know that we're looking at bringing a project to the town from the school building committee. Build a new school or renovate one of our two. If neither of those things pass a town meeting, a town referendum, then we're at, we need to invest in the schools that we do have. And we have put off a lot of that as we embark on this process. The superintendent has been very honest with us about how many projects are going to come up more. He, everything that needs to be done in that school is not in the current CIP plan, but CIP is a planning tool. If we don't actually begin planning, and part of that planning was some spending now, so there is funds later. The school building committee is aware of the fact that we have a timeline that could have us as early as this fall, a referendum to the townspeople. If that project moves forward, that would mean by June, we would be submitting an application to Office of School Construction for a grant, which would mean if it's accepted in the following year, we would begin to need some dollars in order to begin the design process. So CIP took all of those factors into account and said, we need to start planning for a project. We don't know what that project is, but the planning needs to be there. I will say the engineering on the, I don't have CIP in front of me. And the engineering for the fire department is coming out of Fund 17, I believe. I need that document to be 100% sure, so that's off budget. The whole spending is coming out of the Reserve Fund for two Public Works items. And so there's putting dollars into the Reserve Fund to help build up so that when we need to make a payment on a potential bond for a school project, there is funding there. So you, the documents you had in front of you, which Donna had prepared for us, showed that the difference here in CIP, although a different makeup of funds, was $64,000. So we are spending $64,000 than we did last year, but again, that's planning for some larger some larger projects. I will tell you, after sitting through that meeting and hearing say they were not comfortable with taking care of the Moose Meadow Road project we brought to them, a road that's been severely neglected for many, many years, long before table, and needs to be done, say, he'd feel better if it were in the budget or if it were in CIP. There are two roads in CIP that have been there for 30 years. We can move these things to CIP and watch them sit there and not be done, no matter how many times we've argued for them. I've sat at the table with you, Jim, while we both argued. I've sat at the table with you, Jim, while we both argued that work needed to be done, and it did not. Um, you know, our public works director is here and can tell you, part of this Moose Meadow Road area was in the roads that need to be completed in this coming year. So there was a portion of the damage to be in there. But we know we're looking at close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix thirty-nine hundred feet of road. His entire road budget is about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So there's, there's a problem here where we're not putting enough spending where we need it, we're just making do.
Or we're not prioritizing. I mean, some of those other projects are like the, well, the drainage job, asphalt road. I know what that is, I drive by it every day, drive on asphalt road every day, right? But I think Moose Meadows is a, that should go right to the top of the list. I drove on that recently too, that's a mess. You know, that, that won't last too long.
Look, I think because it's a visual mess, people think we, you know, it should, needs to go to the top of the list, and it does, it needs to be. But these other roads still need to be fixed. And if we continue to say we have work and we're just going to cut so that, you know, the, I, number looks comfortable.
It's all about choices and priorities. Is this the year to go do that or not? I, I think no, that's, that's my opinion, and that's why I'm making these calls. So this, this is not the year to put that kind of spending grease on, burden on the top.
I, I think we have not had a, an increase. Look, I don't want to, I'd rather, I'd love for us to be able to come in here and say, we don't have to increase this budget. We're able to do it and send something for, for five years. We've had a relatively flat mill rate and um, relative in, increases. And there are multitude of reasons for that. I would suggest we ask the board of finance to send this budget to the voters and, and put it before the voters in Wellington. We're talking about a three point nine percent increase overall. Um, and I am not sure if, I, I know for a fact that uh, Region eighteen is not done with their work. So I don't know if our number will go up or down, it's already gone down.
Yeah.
Once, um, with the correct proposal before the board of finance, it looks like it would be about a one point uh, nine mil, a one point nine four mil increase. Um, while we all said we weren't necessarily comfortable with that, what I'm not comfortable doing is just making cuts to get to a certain percentage and then not talking about the ramifications of those cuts. One of your proposals, Jim, is uh, cutting thirty-two thousand dollars from the assessor. I did propose a significant increase there. I couldn't, I can't stress enough the importance um, of having an assessor that um, that does accurate work. And we continuously cut ourselves short and make our options smaller when we, um, when we're looking for someone to just give us a couple hours here and there and hope that that will get us by. Uh, if I can tell you one thing, it's, it's not enough. And that's where the taxable revenue in this town comes from. And I believe um, with the right assessor, our grand list, even this year, would look very different than it does now. Um, and we've heard from multiple residents who have had significant um, concerns. It's, it's not enough time, cutting to thirty-two thousand puts us right back where we were before. And um, I just don't think it's enough. So I, I have to look at what we get from those cuts as opposed to, you know, making it look nice. Um, that if, if we need these things, I disagree with cutting tree work. Look, I'd love to say we have surplus at the end of the year and use that, but if the surplus isn't in public works, Troy doesn't have the money to move around within his budget. We go before the board of finance to move money before we can cut those trees. And there's no guarantee what every other department outside of, of ours is going to be spending. So I, I think it's, it's a risk and we cut that budget significantly last year. I'm not willing, I'm not comfortable doing it again. Um, had we, for last, we would.
We were credit cutting that budget significantly last year too. Um, if, I think there's a meeting in, uh, from a year ago probably, um, where, you know, Jim, you weren't at the table yet, but where all three of us had agreed, um, all three of the selectmen at the time had agreed that we had, we, we should not have taken out the money for the tree trimming. So I don't want to, I don't want us to keep repeating those mistakes. That's what this, having been what, our fifth process, going through the budget now. Um, we can't keep repeating these same mistakes and expecting that we're going to end up somehow in a better place. Because what I've seen is that we have cut necessary expenses um, to the point where it, it costs us more the next year. We've seen that over and over again. We saw that with the trees when we cut the tree budget last year. We saw it with the roads when we cut the road budget last year. Our past year with roads has also been very difficult. So um, we can't keep making the same mistakes of cutting things from the budget um, because it, it actually does not help the taxpayers. We do spend more in the end.
Um, as we continue on, I just want to make a comment to both of you. Um, the link we have is the same one for the ARPA meeting, so we have to be done at six thirty so that ARPA can begin, just to keep that in mind. Um, yeah, I, I just, again, if we could have gotten to these increases, um, I think we would be there before. This isn't an easy one to struggle with. Can I ask Troy your opinion on the work of the library suggesting in their parking lots? If that were something we put off.
The lever.
I'm sorry, the senior center.
I think that could be put off.
You don't believe that there's a, a safety risk in not maintaining that this year?
Not at all. They're just going to put seal coat over that, that is fine there, and then we're going to re-stripe the parking lot. The stripes are, I mean, you probably could re-stripe that parking lot for three hundred dollars. So I mean, if that's what they need to see the lines better, that, to resurface that parking lot, I don't feel that it's necessary.
What I don't want to do is if we thought it was a, a safety concern and, and move forward. It's a, it's a, a small increase within their line, and it didn't go to CIP again because it was under the ten thousand dollar threshold. So they put it in their uh, budget, that's six thousand dollars.
How about town council? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, at least, at least my notes say that if we take five thousand dollars, reduce that line by five thousand dollars, it's still a fifty percent increase over what we spent in twenty twenty. I'm just looking at, I also looked at what we spent then, so I mean, there's that.
Yeah, look, I'm, you know, I don't just pick up the phone and call the town attorney um, e- every time I'd like or every time someone asks. We use them a lot more, but those are expenses we don't know about, right? So we can cut that cost, and when we have something, we're going to have to go back to the board of finance um, and hope that they can fund something moving forward. It's not an area where I'd like to, but it, it's probably one of the only areas where we don't have known spending. Um, we're not, um, I don't believe.
We have, we have history, right?
Well, yes, but legal issues, Jim, aren't standard reoccurring costs. So we don't know what we're going to spend there.
Historical data, it's not like we're doing it in total vacuum.
Sure.
There's an op, there's an ability to, or an opportunity to save a few thousand dollars there.
There's a history in spending, but you never know what legal challenge you're going to be presented with. Um, and so, look, is it an area if, if we wanted to cut? Uh, we would, legal is not where I would cut expenses, but.
It's the town hall, the town office building? Matt, can you hear me?
I, I can hear you, Liza, but all of a sudden Erica froze.
Yeah. Liza, it's Janice, I'm in the collector's office and I can connect fine, but it looks like something downstairs froze.
Okay. All right, well.
Can I ask an unofficial question while we're waiting for them to come back? Or is that not allowed?
Yeah, it, it's not really, um, it's not really kosher to do that within the, within a meeting.
That, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. Um, but hopefully we'll get, uh, hopefully they'll get reconnected.